We'll call the meeting to order. I invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Colpak?
Here.
Peppcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Library, the November movie series will feature four disaster films to the 1970s. The dates in the films are November 3rd Airport, November 10th, The Poseidon Adventure, November 24th, A Towering Infernal, and December 1st Airport 1975. Great time to watch disasters, holy cow. Other Fargo tops the new analysis of Americans fastest growing cities by rialtoile.com, which said Fargo's population will surge to nearly 429,000 by the year 2100. North Dakota's current ranks of the sixth most affordable state of cost of living, and Fargo's housing market reflects affordability with a median home price of 389,000. Other cities in the top 10 include Denton, College Station, Sugar Land, Frisco, Round Rock, Texas, and Fort Collins, Colorado, and Muff Free Borough, Tennessee, Lincoln, Nebraska, and Renton, Washington. Lumen Securities has facilitated the closing of $21.5 million in tax exempt and taxable bonds to fund the construction and long-term findings of the Alaskowitz Riverfront, 110-unit affordable multifamily apartment community in Fargo. The project will be developed by Blue Line Development and the Fargo Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And if you haven't been over there, they put in the foundations and they're starting the building, so excited about that. It should be done by next year. Hopefully it'll be like the fire station and done on time, under budget. That'd be great. On Tuesday, City Hall will host Impact Fargo event organized by the Fargo Youth Initiative. All high school students in Fargo are welcome to attend where they can learn how to make impact on issues that affect youth in the community. There will be sessions on youth homelessness and mental health, and the keynote speaker will be Fred Edwards from the group Fred Dissidents. The event runs from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. and lunch will be served and provided, and it's kind of hope the commissioners can make the 2:15 session, in which you'll break out into sessions and visit with the students. And they get to hear your story, how you got in politics, or what happened, or maybe, John, what you've learned along the way, or how you remember birthdays, I have no idea. And finally, the grand opening ceremony of Fire Station 8 was held last week, and as of today, the station is officially up and running and accepting calls of service. Chief, they've been busy already, I hear, is that true?
A couple.
Okay. The project broke ground on June 20th, 2023, and was expected to cost $5.3 million. The station took, the station only took 16 months to build and also came in under budget by 7%. This new station is designed with the firefighters' health and safety in mind by adding hot, warm, and cold zones to help them make their working and living quarters more comfortable. They also have benefit of cleaning their uniforms, getting them cleaned so they don't have the toxins on their body, and I think the chief and I talked about it, should decrease risk of cancer in our firefighters, we hope. We look forward to seeing the benefits of the station moving forward, and here's a quick video of the grand opening.
Super thankful for City of Fargo and Chief Durkston and everybody that worked on this. They were top-notch clients that we worked with. They just had a very level-headed, realistic expectations and were able to stay on keel and level through the highs and the lows and the struggles of construction. It was a, it was a real blessing to work with them, and everything came, came to fruition as close as we could to schedule, and I think the, the city and the fire department will be happy with the project.
This station is the shining symbol of the City of Fargo's dedication to its firefighters and first responders. Public safety has always been the city's top priority. We'll continue to invest in our public safety agencies, making sure that firefighters and police officers have tools they need to do their jobs effectively, and making sure they have everything they need to keep our community safe.
It has the latest technology and resources that will allow firefighters to respond to fire calls, medical calls, traffic collisions, water rescue, you name it, they truly do it all. And they do it because they are dedicated public servants who want the best for this community.
I mean, to go through a project like this with the limited number of change orders that we had, we were able to work through that and just say, hold the budget. No, we're not going to do it this way. This is the way it was designed. I mean, it might be easier for you, but you bid it this way, that's the way we're going to stay. And so unless there was a functional reason to change it, we didn't change it. We stayed with the design, but we, I will credit our team again 100%. They thought about this ahead of time and put things in place to hold it, and that's how we were able to maintain, be in under budget. For me, I just always want to say thank you to the community, uh, thank you to our firefighters. They do a fantastic job each and every day, uh, serving this community. I can't be more proud to be the fire chief than I am today.
Very good. So motion to approve the order of the agenda.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. So motion to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2024 regular meeting.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Any changes or discussion, all, if not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. So motion to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 33.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Regular agenda, recommendation, direct staff to prepare a winter warming plan. Commissioner Strand is the one who requested this, and Brenda Derrick, if she'd come up and talk to us about it.
Great, thank you, Mayor. We're really lucky so far, the weather hasn't turned as quick as it has some years. Remember early October's, where we've had blizzards and heavy snow events and, and so on. We have our public health department and harm reduction team addressing the, the issues of homelessness on an ongoing basis, as we all know, and it's a challenge also, which we all know. Weather's coming though, and it's, and we, uh, it's our sense internally, this is my portfolio, one of them, but it's our sense internally, we need to just agree to be prepared and know that this is coming and know what we've done in the past and, and kind of have a sense that, that there's a green light to, to do what it takes to, to save lives. So at that, I'll, with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Administrator Brenda Derrick, who's somewhat carrying this portfolio or ball as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I think what we're just looking for today is direction. We do have additional ARP funds left over because of a grant we received last year, so we do have funds remaining that could support winter warming. So we're just looking for direction from leadership on if you would like us to move in that direction.
And that being the case, Mayor, I would advance the motion.
Is a motion to advance, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Mr. Peppcorn.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I'm getting overwhelmed with people complaining about all the vagrants, and now they're dispersed all along the river corridor, they're in people's backyards everywhere. And so what has become happening now is the taxpayers of Fargo, we are in charge of pain for hospitality, for vagrants, so we're a magnet community, uh, and, and the taxpayers of Fargo have to pay for it. They're not Fargo citizens, the majority of them are from all over the place, but the word is spreading and they're coming to Fargo. And so, uh, I think the, the residents are very tired of it. Uh, I'm sure you're getting calls, I know I am. Actually, one of the city's staff just met me, uh, he lives in North Fargo and said, uh, my wife won't go outside. And now when you drive around town, there's people passed out everywhere, just sleeping everywhere. And so is that what we want our city to be? Because that's what it is. And if, to me, turning our downtown into a crap hole, uh, that's not what the Renaissance Zone was designed for. We've spent millions of dollars and now it's being destroyed. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion. Mr. Strand.
Thank you. You know, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with anything you've said, Mr. Peppcorn, that there, there's a concern i- in the community and with the citizenry about this, but, um, what are our options? Do we just start letting people freeze to death? You know, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to when I got to Fargo the last time, this is my third time here, I think it was March 8th or so, thereabouts of 1998, I believe, and, and I'll say the name, Clovia White Lightning showed up at a, a shelter in town, and there was a blizzard coming. And it's a different time then, but she was turned away shelter, and they found her body frozen to death the next day. That's the alternative. You know, every time we have a year and one, I'm communicating with our, our harm reduction team and public health people, I, one of the gauges of measurement of success or failure is, have we had any deaths? We're going to have deaths. And if that's where we want to go, I guess that's where we go. I can't infathom that that would be our choice. I'm just saying, I don't know the options. To have winter warming, however, is the humane thing to do for people who are outside in 40 below weather. And, and what other options we have, I don't know. And I'm not sure that it's bearing out in fact that people are coming here for services. I don't know that there's a basis for that. There's just people out there that are homeless. What's making more people homeless than anything is they're being evicted. That's where they're, why, you know, so, so again, I don't know the answers, but we do need to provide a space, and I, and I hope our, our staff and administration and people can come up with a, a way to do this without, you know, over impacting the citizens and the people, but, but gee, if we, if we all of a sudden, we have 40 or so people, I think, up, up the rivers now, all of a sudden, what are we going to do if we have 40 frozen deaths, frozen bodies?
Mr. Peppcorn.
So, Mr. Chair, the other impact is now what we have in downtown Fargo is, uh, people are afraid to go there. And so what's happening now is, uh, your customers are afraid to come downtown, so the businesses are leaving and closing, and so what will eventually happen is property values will go down, and so then our taxes will go up. And that's what's happening now. The citizens of Fargo are providing for services for our entire region, and that's why our property taxes are going up. And so all the people, so, you know, West Fargo, Clay County, Becker County, they send their homeless and vagrant population to Fargo to take care of them, and the taxpayers of Fargo have to shoulder the bill. And sure, it's easy to give these different examples to scare people, but at the end of the day, what's happening is, the property taxes are getting so hard, so high for the people on fixed incomes, you're going to push them out of their home, and they'll become homeless. So it'll be on us. So anyway, it's unconscionable. And then on top of that, that we've spent all this time to re-energize and revitalize downtown Fargo, and now our own commissioners are doing the damage, destroying it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colpak.
Yeah, I, I'll add, um, kind of reiterate some comments I had when we first press, excuse me, passed the ordinance with the resolution that this complex problem, every community in the country is dealing with this homeless issue. It is because of an increase in evictions, um, that, you know, coming off of a pandemic where there were funds that are no longer available, we're right sizing, right setting, um, a number of programs and services. But at that time, we talked about the need for the ordinance and resolution to be very active and dynamic, and it continues to be. I would say this is probably the most active issue that our, our leaders are working on on a daily basis, and it's going to continue to take some time. But I can tell you, when citizens have reached out to me, the response from staff to address the issue, whatever it may be, the concerns, if people are in places they're not supposed to be, there is now a process in place to, to, to address that. Our mobile outreach team has gotten, continues to be very active in downtown, and the other partner in all of this has been the Downtown Community Partnership and all of the businesses represented there, everyone recognizing this is a complex issue, but it's going to take time and intention to continue to find the solutions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Turnberg.
I will say, personally, I don't think that our ordinance and resolutions are working. I was just down there last week, and the amount of tents and camps that are now not under the bridge but along the river are mind-blowing. And one even, I was contacted today, a tent campsite set up with fencing around it and it posted no trespassing sign. So, I mean, that's what we're dealing with. So we've got to do something. I continue to have people reach out concerned that the problem is not being taken care of and the city isn't taking action. Thank you.
One more, Mr. Chair. Uh, the other thing that's happening now is our police don't respond. Uh, now we get calls, uh, for these things, and the police say, they send some other nonsense thing. The police have to respond and say, you got to go. That's what we, we have to start cleaning up this city. It's turning into a crap hole. That's embarrassing. So I was going to go down and walk to see what it looked like by myself? I did not go. I started, I thought I was brave, I did not go. I started walking down there, and it's literally fear for your life. In downtown Fargo, it was 1:00 in the afternoon, and unless I would have had a handgun in my hand, I would have feared for my life. And so I was like, you know what, forget it, I'll just not go. How embarrassing for the City of Fargo, and how embarrassing for our leadership. And it's so easy to do all these things spending other people's money, and that's what we're doing. And then the worst part of it is, you're destroying our downtown that we did, we worked for decades to make it into what it was. It isn't anymore. Drive downtown, look at all the empty storefronts, and it's on your watch. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to remind you, it's on our watch. Chief, have we had any problem with officers not coming out and arresting when they've been asked to arrest? I don't think so. We're making progress on the campsites, as far as I'm going. We have one of the best downtowns we've had, the Bison Hut last week, and we had a huge amount of people downtown, in our downtown. I think we have to look to a solution. Mr. Turnberg, one thing you don't know is the warming. Last year, we had to warm 40 to 50 people a night for all through winter, so it has been a need in the community, and they're not all from all over. Oftentimes, they are from throughout the state, there's no question that happens to us. So this is a complex issue in which we have to put our all best ideas together. Our downtown's one of the jewels we have, and we have to continue to support that and help it work. I believe, Mr. Strand, you're working on downtown business partners, we're working on it actively every week, every week we're working on it. We've been getting reports from Rocky Schneider, things are improving. We've been getting repeat, reports from the chief, the crime is down. We're getting reports we're making progress, campsites we're making progress on. There's no question more work has to be done on it, and we have to continue. So I'd ask you and, Mr. Peppcorn, both of you, you see a problem, give them a call. Call the Engagement Center, call Brenda, call the chief. We will address those issues, and we're continuing to address those issues. And as I recall, when we started the camping issue, we were concerned about arrests, and we didn't have one arrest. We had people, we moved them, we've been able to do that. The chief does have an ordinance and he can arrest people, so if you want to call 911 and have a police officer come, a police officer will come. There's no question in my mind that somebody will address that issue. Mr. Strand.
You know, we're the, we're the same community that has learned and embraced how to handle flooding. We, we've had higher numbers of floods over time and more and more incidents of, of floods coming down the tracks at us. And we know how to do that really well. We have no problem understanding that that's what it takes to save a city or save our investments or save our people. We do that really well. Well, I tell you, 40 below is the same thing for people outside. That's what's coming down at us and them, and it, it's on us. Do we protect people from floods? Do we protect people from fires? Do we protect people from, you know, do we take care of our people or not? We have some people who are incredibly vulnerable at that risk. We didn't, they, they, they're not all there because of their choosing, they're just there, okay? Now it's on us. What do we do when this problem is occurring across the country and around the globe? There's 8 billion people on the planet now. There were 2.5 billion when I was born. They got to go somewhere. And it's, and, and so with a, you know, our, I, I'm just welcoming the, the guidance our staff and administration give us about their best thinking about how do we avoid deaths, just like we do with floods? How do we avoid catastrophe? How do we make sure that we plan down the road so it doesn't keep happening over and over and over and over again? And that's where the long-term solution with the Bloomberg Institute and others, where we're looking for the Engagement Center's future and the program's future. But for the moment present, we, we need to protect the people here.
Mr. Chair, just, I would encourage the taxpayers to look up the Bloomberg Institute, and that's who is behind the Downtown Engagement Center, and I think you'd be shocked at what you find, who's really behind the agenda. Uh, it's very scary. And to, to think that we can obligate the taxpayers of Fargo to provide the services, we're providing social services for the whole region, and we're not being reimbursed. It's the taxpayers of Fargo that are paying for all this, and we're providing for, like I said, Becker County, all of North Dakota, and we're, the, the taxpayers are getting sick of it, and they're getting sick of what's turning, our city is going downhill and our taxes are going up. That's not a winning combination, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Peppcorn, where's this data coming from, that there's people coming from these other counties? I know you're, you've named two or three counties tonight. Where's this information coming from, and where's it vetted and proven to be factual?
Uh, so like in Becker County, when a church has somebody that's homeless, they say, we just send them to Fargo, and they take care of them.
Is that what's happening? Is that what's happening?
Absolutely.
Jen, could you come up and address this, please, for public health? Somebody tell us if this is the truth or not.
You can truth check me, Mr. Chair.
No, I'm serious. Is it the truth?
Fact check.
Somebody else is saying they're bringing them in by the buses. This, this stuff doesn't help when it's not factual.
One thing I'm glad, Mr. Peppcorn, you want others to pay for this, the county could help us out, the state could help us out. There is no question, I think when we had last time, that we had Chandler do an evaluation of this, that 70% are from around the region. They come from all over the state, their money around the region. We have a fairly high population of Native Americans that come here as well, so we have a fair amount of local people that come into this. I don't know about Becker County, but, uh, there'd be a question, and I'm welcoming the fact that Bishop Peppcorn will help with the state to try to get additional funding, because the City of Fargo does oftentimes carry the burden of social services, which typically the county does. So I, I welcome us, uh, let's look at other ways of funding this. The reality is, this year, we have some funding available for warming. I think next year is a good question of what we're going to do, and I think that's the question we're asking. We have also asked in the Engagement Center. We have the Deputy Mayor of New York City that handled homelessness, and the Bloomberg Institute that's helping us out. They have studies from around the country, they're just helping us out and giving us consulting services, which kind of compares different types of solutions across the country. I think they're going to give us a report here sometime in the next two months, and it'll give a report of that. You can judge them per what they give us at that time. But so far, they've had excellent discussions, and when they came here, they went into the camps, they went into the deck, they went into downtown, they went all through the city to see what we had to offer and felt we can find some solutions, so we'll continue to look for solutions.
Mr. Chair, real quick.
Mr. Peppcorn.
Uh, one of the very last people we should be taking advice from is the Bloomberg Institute and Michael Bloomberg and his money and his agenda. They are out to destroy the interior cities of our whole country, and unfortunately, they picked out Fargo, and unfortunately, you decided to participate. Uh, but the Downtown Engagement Center is an absolute disaster. It's destroying our downtown, and instead of building a performing arts center, what do we have? A crap hole. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would ask you not denigrate our city, Commissioner Peppcorn, since a lot of people coming into our city think it's a fantastic city.
So, Mr. Chair, just, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, actually, crime is up, but what's happening now, people aren't reporting crime anymore because they're, they're losing confidence in our police response. That's, that's what I'm hearing from our, from our people in our city, and so that's a concern. And if you don't think people are disappointed with the decline of our city and drive around the downtown, I do every day, and look what's happening.
Mr. Chairman, you know, a few weeks ago, we had an opportunity with one of the proposals, even though it didn't get past first base, to add up to four police officers to downtown, and none of you embraced that. I'd like, I'd like to know what are our plans, how do we address these issues, rather than just point at these concerns? What are the solutions? How do we roll up our sleeves and as a team partner with each other and the people in the community to solve these issues, rather than just say they exist? We need solutions. I believe we need more law enforcement downtown. I might be the only one who thinks that, but it isn't happening, and it's on us. We can say this till we're blue in the face. Until we do something about it, there's no action.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Peppcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Public hearings, item 35, annexation at 243 acres or more or less part of the west half, section four, township 138 north, range 49 west of 5th Principal Medium, Cass County, North Dakota, first reading annexation ordinance. Donald Crest to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners, Donald Crest of the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. These items include ordinances prepared by the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor stated, the first item here is an annexation. Um, this area here, uh, here's 52nd Avenue South and Veterans Boulevard. This area here is where the Southwest Pond Regional Stormwater Detention Facility is, and we'll see some pictures in a moment here, occasionally referred to as Lake Fargo. Uh, but the city is the owner of this, uh, this is the west half of section four here. The city is the owner of this, almost this entire property. The Southeast Cass Water Resources District owns a little piece of Drain 27 here. And, uh, so we, the city has initiated, they're the owner, so it's an owner-initiated annexation through ordinance, uh, to annex this to the city, um, for the Southwest Pond. There is no developer involved here, there is no development proposed, but it's important that this be in the city, um, at this time. Here, a couple of photographs here, I don't know how often the Commissioners get a chance to get down here. Um, this part here is actually already annexed, so you're looking at this area here, looking south from, uh, that lift station at the end of 52nd Avenue, you have to walk down there. Or at the end of Veterans Boulevard, rather. Uh, here's again some shots from that, uh, lift station that's right across the bridge there on 52nd Avenue. Here is 64th Avenue South. Um, your staff report says access is available to the property through 64th Avenue. Well, it's a little bit of a muddy access there, but you can get there. And, uh, this is what the stormwater facility actually looks like, in case you've never been down there, along the sunny shores of Lake Fargo there. Um, the property is, uh, is zoned agricultural. Uh, we consider the Southwest Pond to be a utility, so that a basic utility, so that's a approved use or an allowed use in the agricultural zone. The plat depicts the annexationary, the cross-hatched area here is the annexationary. This plat was created by the City of Fargo Engineering Department. Uh, Cass County and Stanley Township were notified of this annexation pursuant to the requirements of the North Dakota Century Code. The applicant, the City of Fargo, represented by our city engineer Tom Nochbus, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. City staff appreciates the cooperation of Southeast Cass Water Resources District for joining us in this annexation. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Does anyone present who wishes to speak to this annexation? Anyone present who wishes to speak to this annexation? If not, a closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 36, Southwest Fargo Mission 2nd Edition, approval recommended by Planning Commission on 10/1/24, zoning change from general commercial with conditional overlay to multi-dwelling residential with conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this property, we're going downstream on Drain 27 now, so we're down, going north here. Uh, so this property is located here at the corner of 45th Street and 40th Avenue South, right next to Living Waters Lutheran Church. Uh, the property is currently zoned general commercial with conditional overlay. Uh, and the proposal by the applicant is to rezone the property to multi-dwelling with conditional overlay, different conditional overlay. Uh, here are a couple, uh, shots of the, uh, property here, looking north from the banks[1733.32] Here, a couple shots of the property here, looking north from the banks of drain 27, looking south from 40th Avenue. This is the access driveway from 45th. Your staff report mentions the city has worked on an agreement with the property owner and the developer to allow this to be used as an access. There's a lift station off to right here. So that has been worked out with the applicant. Zoning is general commercial, and again, the proposed zoning is MR3. The conditional overlays changed because one emphasized, the current one emphasized the commercial development, where the new overlay will emphasize residential development. The draft overlay is in your packet there. And we have these overlays because this development is on the corner of two arterials. That's our practice to have some site development and building design standards on that. The applicant, applicant's representative, Chris Mack of Christianson Companies, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Planning commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on your screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Does anyone present who wishes to discuss the zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, 37, application for ownership change, Class C alcoholic beverage license of Vault Partners doing business as Fort Knox, located at 52nd Broadway North. And Steve, I'd like to split this motion because we have two different owners. One owner we didn't have any issues with, but the other owner, there are some issues. So I would like you to present it as two different owners separately, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. This is an application for a Z alcoholic beverage license. The Z is a full alcohol license, which allows a bar and does not require food sales. So a little bit of background on this license, this is Fort Knox. And in 2021, the license was transferred from RDO to the current Vault Partners. The Vault Partners at that time consisted of three different owners. Two of the owners are, have been removed with this application. The one owner, Mr. Lavoy, remains, and then they're adding one new owner, Mr. Jerk. The application was received on May 30th, and the background check was completed June 4th. We received it back from PD on October 2nd, and it went to Liquor Control Board. The Liquor Control Board voted four to nothing to approve both of the applicants. They did not split as the mayor's requesting. So, I don't know if there's any questions?
Yeah, if we could go first for Cole Jerk, there's nothing on his application. Chief had no comments.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Is that appropriate, Nancy? Is he allowed to split it when it's, basically, it says, move to issue a Class C alcoholic beverage license default partners? I don't know what there is to split there.
There is two applicants, and so both backgrounds were completed, so I do believe it would be appropriate to have each of the applicants considered separately.
Okay, thank you.
There were no items found in the background check for Mr. Jerk?
So do I have a motion? Excuse me, is there any present who wishes to speak to change in ownership? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Not, I'll close that public hearing. Do I have a motion for Cole Jerk?
Mayor, I have a question, if I would.
Yes, sir.
Tell me what the Liquor Control Board did.
It was unanimous, four to zero, and I'll just summarize it if it's okay, Mr. Chair. So the main reason we were four to zero, I believe, was they've been good owners since they've owned it. We haven't had any issues. We've had some with some of our others. So they've been a good ownership group, and so that's why it was unanimous. The chief did bring up his concerns, and one of the violations was a misdemeanor reckless driving from 15 years ago. And so from, I guess, from our perspective, that was not something, it would be different if it was a felony, which recently happened, but it was, to me, it was a minor infraction. And so I guess that would be my summary of why the Liquor Control voted four to zero. Is that, thank you.
And again, I'd like to split, I'll have a discussion about Mr. Lavoy after I have the discussion, then Mr. Jerk. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Jerk?
I still move.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So actually, Mr. Lavoy, police chief, I'll call you up because there was a reason you did not recommend him. And actually, there's two items in which he was of concern. In search of the records, shows in 2015, a DUI arrest for Lavoy. This case was later plead down to reckless driving, which Lavoy pleaded guilty. Alcohol-related citation was not listed in background packet. Number two is the search in Minnesota public records shows the 2010 conviction for disorderly conduct in Menomon County. This is misdemeanor offense. Nancy, I'd have, will you please read to us, when you make an application, what is one of the recommendations which you absolutely cannot be on the ownership if you do not fill out the forms correctly? Can you please read that part of the ordinance?
Well, I can provide you some background. Just in 2018, it was presented, I believe, to Liquor Control Board and then to City Commission for a resolution establishing license application qualifications. The ordinance does provide for a recommendation from the chief of police. At that time, it was Chief Todd asked for a little bit more guidance on what would be appropriate for his recommendations. That resolution was adopted by the city commission on February 22nd, 2018. And as I understand it, the chief has indicated that they're failed to include those statements on the application. The resolution does provide that any false statement in the application process shall result in automatic refusal of the license application or immediate withdrawal of prior issuance. So I, that is what is presented to Liquor Control Board and this body for consideration.
And chief, was that the reason you denied?
Yes, sir. The applicant is asked to fill out a questionnaire with a number of yes or no questions about their background and then a background waiver so that we can evaluate pursuant to city ordinance their suitability for the position. And looking at Mr. Lavoy's application, question three is, have you ever been convicted, pled guilty, or pled no contest to any law of the United States or any state or a local ordinance other than traffic? DUI should not be considered a traffic offense and therefore must be listed. He answered no, and he failed to disclose his misdemeanor arrest in 2010 in Minnesota for disorderly conduct. That was 14 years ago. Question number four, have you ever been issued a citation for any alcohol-related offense? He answered again, no, and failed to disclose his 2015 arrest for DUI in which he received an alcohol-related citation. The case was later pled to reckless driving, but that does not negate the fact that he received an alcohol-related citation and falsely answered that question. Both of these violations are not, in my opinion, distant in time. I don't think being arrested twice in the last 14 years is something that you would normally forget or neglect to report, especially when you're specifically asked about it. So based on the guidelines and sub seven, as the city attorneys laid out, my recommendation was for denial.
So that's why I split the motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So misdemeanor, you're supposed to report all misdemeanors? Is that what you say?
Misdemeanor is a crime, yes. Any crime or any, so the question, sir, is convicted, pled guilty, or pled no contest to any law of the United States. That's felonies and misdemeanors.
Yeah. I guess my main thing in what the Liquor Control Board looked at was the amount of time since this happened, that they were misdemeanors and that they've been owners of this bar for a lot longer than that. And I think we've had a history of, we've had people that have made mistakes in their life, and we've given them another chance. I think you could look back, and actually, the city commission, we voted to approve the licenses too. And so I think that's the main thing, that this was, to me, misdemeanors from when you were in college. To have that be something that we would eliminate your liquor license when you've been a holder, a responsible holder of the liquor license, that's why we passed it four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but I think the problem you have is it's been dishonest in the form that was filled out. And Commissioner Pepcorn, I made you aware of this and gave Mr. Lavoy an opportunity to correct that. I asked him to meet with Steve today, and he could redo his application, come back to us again, and he refused to do that. So he was given an opportunity to fix the problem.
No, 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 Mr. Chair, can I correct you? He came in today, correct, Steve Sprague?
Yes, correct.
So he, so, Mr. Chair, you contacted me, I contacted Mr. Lavoy, Mr. Lavoy came in today, you requested me to have him, he went with, he met with Mr. Sprague, and Mr. Sprague said, nah, we're not gonna, the deal's off.
Not quite. I gave him three options. One, he could withdraw his name. Two, he could file a new application, we'd bring it back to Liquor Control, or three, go ahead with the application as submitted. One of the things that he pointed out, and he had a copy of his 2021 application, he had disclosed the things that the chief is pointing out now in 2021, and the chief, you were here in '21, right? Yeah. Approved that application at that time. You know, so he pointed those items out to me, and he did point out also that he had office staff fill out the application, and I told him, well, you signed it, you're responsible for the information that's on the application. So that was the discussion that we had today at 3:00.
But anyway, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you know that I, you, that's what, you contacted me, I contacted him, and he did what we requested. So I just wanted you to know that, because you remember, anyway, that's what happened, correct, Steve?
I'm not debating, we had a conversation, Commissioner Pepcorn, I'm just, he did meet with Steve and was given an opportunity to fix it.
And he called me back at 4 o'clock and said that he wanted to go ahead with the application as.
Yeah. I'm just saying, he could have fixed it.
Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Strand?
This application is by Vault Partners Limited Liability Partnership.
That's correct.
It's a partnership. How do we have an application from an entity, a corporate, a structure, and not give it to both owners if it's a partnership? I don't, I don't know how this would work. It's not an individual applicant, it's a partnership. It's two of them. It's a business. And they're applying for a license. How do you give it to one of the two partners? I just don't know how this.
I don't know, John, but you list both owners. So a big thing about Liquor Control is they best always the owners, and yes, an owner can be rejected, and the other part of the partnership owns it. They oftentimes bring their wife in or somebody else to be on the partnership. Nancy, is there any issue on that? Is it a partnership and he's part of the partnership? Do you reject both?
If there is more than a 5% ownership, the ownership must be approved in total. So there would be a concern there about whether the partnership could receive.
My suggestion is this goes back to staff and administration and come back to us with a solution rather than just a dilemma. I'm not sure what the solution would be, but this is a dilemma.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess that's my, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Strand, but to me, could we continue it for one meeting and then come back with a resolution? Is that acceptable?
I would second that.
Is that okay with you, chief and Steve?
Sure, no, I'm, fine by me.
I support that.
Make the motion, please.
I'll make the motion, continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 38, application for tax exemption for approvals made on buildings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
A lot of people rebuilding, working out well. Roll call vote.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 36, Southwest Fargo Mission, second addition. Approval recommended by planning commission and 10-124. Zoning change from general commercial with conditional overlay to multi-dwelling residential with conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This property, we're going downstream on drain 27 now, so we're down, going north here. So this property is located here at the corner of 45th Street and 40th Avenue South, right next to Living Waters Lutheran Church. The property is currently zoned general commercial with conditional overlay. And the proposal by the applicant is to rezone the property to multi-dwelling with conditional overlay, different conditional overlay. Here, a couple shots of the property here, looking north from the banks of drain 27, looking south from 40th Avenue. This is the access driveway from 45th. Your staff report mentions the city has worked on an agreement with the property owner and the developer to allow this to be used as an access. There's a lift station off to right here. So that has been worked out with the applicant. Zoning is general commercial, and again, the proposed zoning is MR3. The conditional overlays changed because one emphasized, the current one emphasized the commercial development, where the new overlay will emphasize residential development. The draft overlay is in your packet there. And we have these overlays because this development is on the corner of two arterials. That's our practice to have some site development and building design standards on that. The applicant, applicant's representative, Chris Mack of Christianson Companies, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Planning commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on your screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Does anyone present who wishes to discuss the zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 36, Southwest Fargo Mission, second addition. Approval recommended by planning commission and 10-124. Zoning change from general commercial with conditional overlay to multi-dwelling residential with conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This property, we're going downstream on drain 27 now, so we're down, going north